Good evening and welcome to the August 10, 2021 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we do sense, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first on our agenda tonight, we have public comment and we have, I'm going to follow our practice of first reading public comment or having public comment of the participants in person and then I'll read public comments that were sent to us in email. So first, we have Amanda Conover.
Hi, that's my maiden name, actually. It's Amanda Steiger. Distinguished members of the board, good evening. I appreciate you hearing us today. I attended Gilderlin K through 12 and I was proud of the progressive, creative opportunities and ideas here like the X program. I watched seniors, teachers, and administrators come together and debate the Commissioner of Education when he mandated the Regents exam for those classes. We lost that argument, but what an incredible opportunity to show a young and impressionable freshman how to be a free, independent thinker who can stand up for what makes sense and what is right. This was a reason we chose to resettle in my hometown. And here I am, my oldest is an incoming kindergartner, and I'm asking myself, are we still a district of leaders? If you are trying to grow leaders of tomorrow, best practice will tell you that you should be modeling that by example. Your reopening plan was disappointing. Why? Because we are following the easiest action. We have the ability to come up with a creative, yet safe way to open schools that will still afford our children some normalcy. As a recent blood cancer survivor, I understand the severity and I'm not asking you to throw caution to the wind. And frankly, any parent who is truly uncomfortable with any kind of unmasking can put an N95 on their child and send them on their way, but the rest of us need an alternative. While I would prefer my child to be maskless, I am also a reasonable person capable of listening to alternative ideas. I am a product of your education after all. I emailed you all a suggestion about allowing the same rules to apply in classrooms as they do in restaurants. We can rest in the science and the experts who tell us that physical distancing, unmasked at a restaurant is safe. Why is it safe there but not for our classrooms? Why aren't we making any concessions for a group least likely to have severe COVID effects? Common spaces and hallways mask on, but breathe freely at your desk? That's common ground I would be willing to stand on. Can you meet me there? Thankfully Albany County has had zero pediatric COVID deaths. The data is not there for such draconian restrictions. I am deeply concerned about the psychological impact all-day masking will have on my six-year-old and other children, the effects of which we won't know for years and could be irreversible. To ask kindergarteners to engage in critical social development and academic learning, to read facial expressions in a mask unable to see the faces, expressions, and smiles of their peers and teachers feeds depression, fear, and anxiety in the minds of our children. You can tell me children adapt and I believe you. Children are the least likely to stand up against rules, even ones that don't make sense because we have conditioned them to listen to their elders. But when I have witnessed with my own eyes kids afraid to take their mask off and coexist with others, that tells me a different story. As educators of the mind, a child's mental health should be equally as important to you. I'm asking you to reconsider your reopening plan. Creative, independent thinking, leadership, the heart of those qualities still deep in the roots of Gilderlin.
Thank you Amanda.
Thank you.
Just, oh, just as another reminder that all of our public comments are limited to three minutes and so that, just be aware that there's a beeper so we can get through to our business part of the meeting. There's several other public comments that we've been getting via email that we also need to read. So next, we have Sarah Stalteri.
Hello, yes, my name is Sarah Stalteri. I'd like to start off with a personal statement. My husband and I deliberately purchased a home in the Gilderlin School District due to our overwhelming positive experience of the services provided by the preschool special education department. However, in light of recent decisions, my experience with the district has become highly unfavorable. News hit recently that individual districts were to come up with their own guidance for the fall. Wow. Here was our opportunity to be heard, to have a say, and how our children will experience this upcoming school year. However, a choice was not given. Instead of reaching out to the parents and community for input or a vote, a decision was made without zero choice, zero input. Other districts in the surrounding area sent surveys. On August 11, 2020, from Superintendent Wiles, an email was sent outlining the measures that were taken in order to come up with a reopening plan for the previous year. Two surveys were sent to parents. Focus groups were held. A reopening steering committee was done. A subcommittee was created, accounted for 120 parents, teachers, administrators, and community partners. I asked, why wasn't a similar plan used for this upcoming year? I'd like to reference another email dated on August 6, 2020, where the following statement was made. From this board, thank you for your patience and partnership. As we work together, how does the board have the audacity to claim that we are a partnership when they conduct business this way? Lastly, I sent an email on June 8 this year. While I highlighted the lack of representation from the community was alarming at best, that perhaps a vote could give guidance and not a decision made solely by a few. The feedback I received my email was delivered in a dismissive tone at this meeting, saying it's not up to us. Well, here we are, and this is up to you. It is clear that it's up to you. And yet, my utter disappointment with the lack of representation, we have zero choice. We have zero input and certainly zero partnership.
Next, we have Jeff Thomas. Jeff Thomas?
I'm not only a Gilderlin alumni, but my children, my two oldest children are, and I have two current children living in the Gilderlin School District. All the parents here tonight love their children with all their hearts and they would do anything in the world to protect them, including jumping in front of a bullet and dying for them. I have no doubt. We are smart parents, in fact, if I may say brilliant parents in many instances. With this sermon, we educate ourselves on the issues and make sure that our children are well-protected at all times. You have to ask yourself, why are all these parents here tonight fighting this mask mandate? We know how to best take care of our children, what's right for them and how to protect them. We've done that all of our lives and all of their lives. We're their caretakers, their protectors, and their advocates. We have seen our children suffer in the past year with masks. And I can assure you, if you think you know how to take better care of our children than the parents, then you're sadly mistaken. These decisions on masks should be left to us, the parents. I really don't understand who we're trying to protect with this mandate. Children are not spreaders of the disease. Anthony Fauci made it clear when he said asymptomatic transmission was not a threat, and this is a quote, "In all the history of respiratory-borne viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of the outbreaks. The driver of the outbreaks is always a symptomatic person." Children have statistically a 0% chance of dying of COVID. They have more mortality rate than dying from allergic reaction or drowning. All this fear-mongering is making me ill. Who is afraid our children's going to give them a virus? Teachers who have already had the virus, who already had the virus and have antibodies? Teachers that have had the vaccine? Teachers that had the opportunity to get the vaccine? There's no reason for any mask mandates in our school. Our children are falling behind in school and have been harmed physically and psychologically by the mask mandate in the classroom during the last year. These bacteria-ridden cloths are breeding grounds for infections caused by bacteria, mold, and fungus. If you're a parent of a school-aged child as I am, and you see the condition that mask comes back at the end of the day, you're probably as horrified as I am. You send that mask out, it's beautiful, it's all smelling nice, it comes back soaked with sweat, perspiration, food, it's fallen on the ground, it's disgusting. Experts state that mask wearing is having negative impact on our children, affecting breathing, mental state, overall health and development. Can you imagine sitting in a classroom the last two weeks of school last year, this last school year, 96 degrees, being forced to wear a mask? Can you imagine riding that bus home at the end of the day, 96 degrees, wearing a mask? Can you imagine that? Because you won't do it, I won't do it. If our car breaks down, we call AAA and we have it taken to the shop. Board, I ask you, please do what's right for our children. I have Gilderlin School District forego the recommendation of the CDC for children to wear masks.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
And it's a recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
If for some reason you're afraid of being sued, we have experts that will speak on your behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I have other public comments as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Linda, if you could set the timer so I can also adhere to three minutes for the other public comments I'm going to read? Thank you. The next public comment comes from Alan Fitzpatrick. Dear Board members, as the Governor, New York State Health Department, and New York State Ed Department have not mandated mask-wearing and COVID-19 immunization requirements for students and staff upon the start of the September gene portion of the 21-22 school year, I would like to ask you all to: A. Grow a spine and mandate both masks and vaccines for all staff and students 12 and older; B. Ignore the loud-- B. Ignore the loud-- I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read the public comments, thanks. B. Ignore the loud, obnoxious few voices who are screaming, writing, and otherwise being jerks and trying to bully the members of the board. C. If staff, except those with medical reasons, refuse to get vaccinated, either place them on unpaid leave until they do or fire them. Anything less sends the message that the children won't matter. Letter D: If parents don't allow their students to be vaccinated, mandate remote learning for them and don't allow them to play sports or participate in any after-school activities. After all, if the students are as important to the board and the district as you profess, then you are as important in all aspects of education, including after-school activities. Or do you just pay lip service to your mission? Thank you. Alan Fitzpatrick. Let me jump in here with this one. I'm just going to, since we have another in-person public comment, before I continue to read, I'll go ahead and have the next public comment from Chris Bombadear. I'm going to continue reading now. Just as a reminder, we have a three-minute max for our public comments and when you please, when you speak at the mic, can you make sure you please read your name into the mic as well? Say your name into the mic as well. Thank you.
Sure, it's Chris Bombadear. B-O-M-B-A-D-E-R. Excuse me. I appreciate everyone's point of view and I know it's a bit of an electric issue. I have three kids in the district. I care deeply about their safety and their health when they're in school. I think this is a small thing to ask for-- it's a small thing to ask to ensure the continued education of our children.
I think we need to let everyone have their turn to speak, so if you could just let them continue to speak. Go ahead.
There is no constitutional right not to wear a mask, but there is a constitutional right for an education. And if our education is interrupted because there is an outbreak, because classrooms have to be closed--
Your education's--
--that impacts our children. So I appreciate the board's position, the superintendent's position, and thank you for taking a step to ensure the health and safety of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Bombadear. Continue to read. The next, the next public comment is from Lori Fitzpatrick. To the Board of Education, please mandate vaccines and masks for all eligible students and staff members. This is a public health crisis and you have a responsibility to do what is necessary for the public good. This is not a time to worry about popular opinion or reelection campaign. The science is clear, masks and vaccines are the best defense we have currently, we currently have in fighting this pandemic. Have the strength and courage to do what is right, even if it is hard or unpopular. You have chosen to be leaders of this community and now it is the time to lead with science and common sense as your guide. We are counting on you. Do not let us down. That is from Lori Fitzpatrick. Next, I'll go to another in-person public comment. This is, and I apologize if I say it wrong, Dina Restifo.
So I, first, I just want to address the studies that you're basing everything on. Not one of those studies was a clinical independent study and as educators, you must know that you can't make mandates or guidelines without that. You have cohort, you have case-controlled studies from Beijing, and you have hairdresser studies that were debunked. So for you to take an entire district, an entire district of students and their health and their parents' wishes and not go with any independent clinical studies to base what you are doing is egregious at best, egregious. Secondly, as I'm sitting here in this room, I'm noticing the hypocrisy of the board itself. Masks on, mask off, mask on, mask off. And I'm sorry, it's laughable. It's laughable at best. Next, my job, my profession is as of dental hygienist, so I'm quite familiar with over 700 different types of mouth bacteria. And I'm just going to ask you, how often are you changing your masks? How often? Do you know how often you should be changing your masks? I bet you don't. I bet the students are not advised of this either. Not one of you is aware of how to properly wear a mask, not even in this room. So what you're doing is just, it's all a joke and we can see through the joke. It is abuse. It's an absolute abuse. Okay? You have to change a mask every 40 minutes, every 40 minutes to an hour or if it becomes soil. You are not supplying those things and the children are wearing filthy masks all day long. The 700 different kinds of bacterias that are present in a mouth on any given day that are always there are going back into their lungs and they are making them sick. And there have been studies about that and there have been cases about that. So the fact that you're touching them and you're taking them down, you're not supposed to touch your mask, you're not supposed to take them down, but you're doing it yourselves. I'm watching you do it. None of you are properly educated enough to insist that an entire district of children need to put these things on. None of you. Not one. Thank you. Thank you. And, and finally, I got notice of this meeting at 10:30 last night from a friend. Your calendar is at August 18, it begins. So for you not to post the meetings on your calendar-- you need to fix that. I don't know who's in charge of that, but whoever is needs to, needs to make that adjustment because that alone is almost as if you're trying to have meetings in secret and it's, yeah, you're looking like you're, what? What is she talking about? Judy, I'm talking about August 18 is when your calendar starts.
Thank you, Ms. Restifo.
It needs to be fixed.
Okay, the next public comment is from Rebecca Cobos. I want, I write to the Gilderlin Board of Education today as a mother of two children, one in high school and one in middle school. I am also, I also write as a board-certified family physician with both public health and college health experience. As many schools in the capital district plan for a welcomed reopening in the fall of 2021, it is imperative to acknowledge the public health, safety measures, and medical advancements that have helped many of us return to work and school safely. I applaud the efforts made by our district administrators and teachers in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. By quickly adopting the recommended public health mitigation efforts of social distancing, spacing in classrooms, masking, daily health screenings, recommended testing, and accurate contact tracing, Gilderlin Central Schools were able to remain open and provide not only education, but a social existence for our students and community. My colleagues in the medical field are also, are also responded by diagnosing, treating, and immunizing our community. Many of us volunteered to work at Albany County-run point-of-distribution clinics, also known as PODs, to help vaccinate eligible community members. Despite these efforts, as of August 7, 2021, the percent of fully vaccinated individuals in Albany County stands at 62%. This means that roughly two out of every five are not immunized in the county. As cases of COVID-19 once again surge in our community with the total number of new cases in Albany County reaching a recent high of 80 new cases on August 7, it is imperative we renew our public health response and meet this challenge with the same resolve as we had in the winter of 2020. The success of our planned reopening depends on continued compliance with necessary safety measures and vaccinations. As we plan for the fall, I implore the members of the board to mandate the well-documented public health mitigation efforts of indoor masking for both vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and students, to encourage vaccination for the eligible, and to continue social distancing, testing, and tracing when appropriate. Together, hopefully, we can have a successful reopening. Sincerely, Rebecca Cobos. Next, we'll have in-person David Federigo.
Temperature in the room is pretty good, right? All right, so my name's Dave Federigo. I have a five-year-old who will be entering kindergarten in Altamont in September. Unlike his seven-year-old brother who will be going into second grade, he's extremely anxious about the change. A five-year-old's very shy in new group situations, doesn't truly get comfortable or relax until he picks up on social cues from others in the group. This can be a smile, a laugh, anything to put him at ease. Obviously, masks will prevent this. For 18 months now, the Gilderlin School District has been using CDC as a crutch, an excuse as to why things can't return to normal. In those 18 months, I haven't heard much other than we are following the CDC guidance. I'm here to tell you tonight that guidance is not science. Can anyone on this school board tell me the data behind the latest return to school guidance from the CDC? As I'm sure most of you know, children in large part are asymptomatic, don't end up hospitalized, and very rarely die from COVID-19. Because of this, I'm guessing that those are not the measures that this board considered when deciding on mask mandate policy. Was it positivity rates within a certain geographic region? And if so, what is the scientific red line in the sand? Is 4% positivity that line? And if so, do masks become automatically optional when positivity drops below 4%? We have all heard the argument, but what if your child passes the infection to a teacher or another child and they bring COVID home to infect others? There always seems to be a yeah, but when it comes to policy. In fact, this board seems so locked into the orders of Anthony Fauci that you don't even seem to be able to identify the obvious contradictions within your own policy. If you believe that masks protect you from infection, wear one. If you believe that the vaccine protects you from infection, get the shot. There is no one in this room and no teacher that works within this district that has not had the opportunity at this point to get vaccinated. If you want to be extra careful and do both, I encourage it. If you truly believe those things, however, then a mask on my child does not matter. Again, do you believe in science or guidance? Now, I'm sure the pro-mask board members did a good job of recruiting local doctors and nurses to support their position. I would imagine that you have been using this blueprint for a while on a wide range of controversial issues. It's a smart strategy. I personally try to teach my kids to think critically. If I say something that doesn't make sense, I encourage them to ask questions. If they say something that I know to be suspect, I call them out on it. It is actually a great way to filter out the truth. Don't just read the headlines, go to the source material, look at the data. I think most of us here, most of us are here today because the only thing the board seems to have ready is a headline. Just yesterday, Anthony Fauci was asked to respond to a question about kids and masks in a radio interview. The question specifically referred to an editorial that appeared in the Wall Street Journal titled "The Case Against Masks for Children." This editorial made the case that long-term mask wearing can cause physical and developmental issues in children and that there is little evidence to support a mask mandate. The editorial went on to state that facial expressions are integral to learning how to signal fear, confusion, and happiness. Now, you are free to dismiss this editorial as written by anti-vax, anti-mask. Tell it and track, I expect you to do so. Whether you accept that premise or not actually is completely irrelevant. In response to this question, Anthony Fauci acknowledged that it was not comfortable--
Thank you, Mr. Federigo.
--obviously for kids to wear masks, particularly the younger children. He further stated that, hopefully, this will be a temporary thing, temporary enough that it doesn't have any lasting impact on them. So Anthony Fauci has acknowledged that he does not know--
Mr. Federigo, we're trying to adhere to our policy.
--if masks will have any lasting, long-term impact on my child.
Mr. Federigo.
Yet, you're following. This is the guy that, that does the guidance for the entire country, the guy you're following has acknowledged, okay? He's acknowledged that this could be a problem, yet you have not even looked into it.
Thank you, Mr. Federigo. Thank you. Next, we have a-- next, our public comment is from Catherine Malone-Smitas. I speak today as a parent, as an internal medicine physician. I'm proud to live in a community that has by and large taken the threat of COVID-19 very seriously. Our children do not miss a beat when they are told they needed to wear masks and follow new procedures to keep each other safe. Neither of my children ever complained about wearing masks to school last year. It has simply become part of their routine. They are happy to do this to protect themselves, friends, and the community. Now is not the time to become complacent. COVID-19 cases are on the rise and the Delta variant is more contagious than the original strain. In order to keep our children and teachers safe, all members of the school community, regardless of vaccination status, should be masked while indoors. Eligible students and teachers should be vaccinated and distancing measures, when possible, should remain in place. We want to keep our kids and teachers healthy in the schools. Removing the mask requirement will put, will put all at, all at risk of large outbreaks in social, in school closures. Please follow the American Academy of Pediatrics COVID-19 Guidance for Safe Schools and continue to require universal masking. Thank you. Okay, next, I'll let you know, Linda, or when you have the time ready? Okay. The next public comment is from Christina Mancus-Radi. With the approach of a new school year and the age of COVID-19, I realize that public health, safety measures have become a controversial issue, especially amongst a group of vocal opponents in our community. However, as a mom of two kids in Gilderlin Schools, one of which is not eligible for his COVID-19 vaccination at the beginning of the school year, I feel obliged to write and urge the Board of Ed to employ proven safety measures for the upcoming school year given the prevalence of COVID-19 infection in our community. These measures, including masking for all, included vaccinated and unvaccinated students, and social distancing as possible, are necessary to help protect our kids, avoid school closures, and prevent more widespread illness. I am also writing as an adult infectious disease physician who works in the community. In this role, I participate in the care of hospitalized patients who have both survived and succumbed to various serious infections, including COVID-19. For the past 18 months, I and my colleagues in the medical field, including but not limited to nurses, respiratory therapists, advanced practice providers, and physicians, have donned masks, respirators, and other protective equipment to take care of and try to comfort the ill in their families. Despite high uptake of COVID-19 amongst our older and immunocompromised among us, there remains a significant proportion of our community that is unable or unwilling to protect themselves and others around them. For that reason and others, the virus that causes this continues to circulate and cause serious and life-threatening disease in both adults and children. Therefore, as we enter into a new school year, in order to keep our kids in school as well as the health of our community as a whole, I strongly advocate distancing as possible, indoor masking for all, and vaccination efforts for the eligible. Sincerely, Christina Mancus-Radi. Okay, the next public comment is from Jana Altieri. Good afternoon, Dr. Wiles and the school board members. I am a mother to four children in the Gilderlin School District. I would first like to take the time to thank you for handling our school's reopening very well last year. Given the recent announcement that neither the Governor nor the State Department of Health will be issuing guidance to schools and reopening-- Health will be issuing guidance to schools and reopening plans, I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you my thoughts. I strongly believe that mask-wearing as well as COVID vaccination should be left up to parents' choice. I want to clarify that I am not quote anti-mask, nor quote anti-vax, but rather I have a specific concern for children and the effect that the forced efforts may have on them. All along, we have been hearing, follow the science in relation to wearing masks to reduce the spread of COVID. Well, let me tell you that in addition to being a mother of four, I'm also a registered nurse with a master's degree from SUNY Albany School of Public Health, so I know very well about science. But let me ask you this, where is the science that shows children are at high risk of contracting or spreading COVID-19 while in the school setting? Rather, it has been shown children are at low risk for spreading the virus. Masks may actually be doing more harm when worn for six hours a day by a growing child, not only to the higher levels of carbon dioxide but their breathing, but the negative impact on learning, social interaction and mental health. I feel this is especially important when it comes to the younger elementary school children who are developing social skills, speaking, when it comes to, sorry, when it comes to reading skills, which all involve the use of mouth, which has been covered by a mask all last year. I ask you to please look for the data for immediate local area when making decisions about mask-wearing. Children have been interacting all summer with no problems. The governor has open restaurants, bars, concerts and other venues without masks. Why would we mandate that children go back to wearing them on a daily basis? To me, it sounds quite unethical and such decision we base more on fear of the district being penalized should COVID-19 cases occur, rather than putting the actual needs of the children first. Let's start the upcoming year on a positive note and leave the question of mask-wearing up to parents. Each family has their own unique situation that should be respected. I know that personally, my seven-year-old struggled tremendously this past year with the stress of the pandemic, not being able to interact or even smile at her peers or school staff. She has developed anxiety that we are now dealing with as a family. Besides the fam, sorry, besides the physical impact of the virus, we need to think about the mental health concerns and how the isolation has affected children. Rates of alcohol and substance abuse have rose dramatically as well as suicide among teens since the beginning of the pandemic. The decision has been left up to you at this point, not the government. I speak for many parents in the district who are fed up with their kids having to wear masks for hours at a time. Please make the right decision for opening of school in a month. It is time to encourage mask-wearing. Thank you, Linda. That's from Jana Altieri. The next public comment is from Susan McGraw.
Thank you for yielding your time. I didn't finish last time. You know, it's unthinkable that anyone could think that strapping cloth to our children's face and covering their mouth and nose is going to stop a virus, it's going to do anything good. And most importantly, it needs to be said here, masks do not work. The coronavirus and all respiratory viruses, for that matter, are spread by aerosol particles that are small enough to go through every mask. Why would anybody want our healthy children to wear masks? They're not spreaders and the masks are causing our children to live in a constant state of fear. Let's think about what they might be thinking on a daily basis. I can't breathe this air, it'll make me sick, I'm going to get in trouble for not having on this mask. I hate this thing, I can't breathe, but the adults are making me put it on my face. Thoughts like these are probably going through our children's mind every day. Side effects reported by parents include headaches, making it difficult for them to concentrate, increased reluctance to go to school, unhappiness, impaired learning, drowsiness, fatigue and claustrophobia. Now, we must also consider that by hiding the teacher's lips behind a mask, we're muffling their speech. Mask-wearing makes it harder for young children to develop speaking skills and prevents children with hearing impairments from lip reading. How are children supposed to develop social skills when they can't see one another's face? How can children in the classroom learn speech nuances and letter sounds without being able to observe the lip movement or expression on the face? Masks are dehumanizing. They erase our facial expression, they discourage communication. Children need to see what adults and kids are feeling. And on the very simplest level, kids need to see smiles. And they haven't seen smiles in the school in over a year. You know, major aspects were learned from the Spanish flu pandemic of 1918, it's being ignored and I don't know why. There is a universal agreement among experts that the deaths were virtually never caused by the influenza virus itself, but resulted directly from severe secondary pneumonia caused by bacteria colonized in the upper respiratory tract. Dr. Fauci and his National Health Institute study this pandemic and they conclude it, and this is a quote, "The vast majority of influenza deaths resulted from secondary bacterial pneumonia caused by face covering." Again, board, leave the masking and vaccination decision to us children. It's a recommendation, it's not a requirement from the CDC. Glover'sville School and Niskiuna School, I'm told tonight, has now come out and they're not, they're going to forego the mask mandate. I can assure you, I can assure you as parents, we're not going to allow you to force our children to wear masks. We will not follow the CDC's anti-science mask mandates and we will not allow you to mandate something that it will hurt our child. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The next public comment is from Rachel Federigo. Rachel Federigo.
Hi, I just want to finish off with my husband couldn't finish. I do have a 13-year-old that's currently going to be at this high school and then, as he mentioned, a seven and a five-year-old. So we all have a, we all have to weigh risks. For some in this community, the potential risk of catching COVID may lead them to vaccination and a mask. For others, the potential mental health and development risks of wearing a mask may outweigh the risk of COVID. This does not have to be a one-size-fits-all policy and you can fix it. By not allowing a blended approach, you are pitting one segment of this community against another simply because they have different personal convictions about what is best for their children. So what does this all boil down to? Guidance. We as a community deserve guidance, not the CDC kind, specific, transparent, concrete, data-driven guidance. We need to know the measures that you use when you establish this policy and the measure that you have predetermined will be used to end this policy. This cannot be open-ended. We also need an explanation as to why the potential negative impacts of masks on young children does not even seem to have been investigated at all prior to making this decision. The fair thing to do when deciding an issue that affects an entire community is to look at all of the potential consequences of the policy, and I don't feel that this was done here. Most parents of school-aged children have respectfully complied and deferred to your decision-making for the past 18 months. I think we are now approaching the point where some will simply refuse to comply. Personal freedom has never been and never will be something that is handed down out by a small, locally-elected school board. Personal freedom is a God-given right and is protected by our very own constitution. We do not need instructions on how to raise our children. I think sometimes those in elected office forget that. I thank you for your time and I look forward to your written response.
Thank you, Mrs. Federigo. Thank you, Mrs. Federigo.
Hi. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight and I'm sure Ben and Barb are glad I'm not on my normal topic, but I am kind of horrified at, not at the school board, thank you so much, for the letter and the guidance for the students. My concern is that, I teach kindergarten in Schenectady and I have a son that goes to this high school. We're all vaccinated, so, and I'm okay with that. And I'm okay with that. My dad's a research chemist. What would you like me to call it? Fine. You're welcome. Now, but see, again, you're not allowing my voice, but you wanted me to listen to yours. So my concern is that when my son's here, what I've understood is that the Delta, I can carry as an asymptomatic, so, but I'm vaccinated, so it's not going to kill me, right? It's not going to kill my kid. It may or may not. I have, my aunt died the other day. Yeah, I'm sure you are, because it doesn't feel genuine. That's why I'm here, because if my kid gets it and brings it back to me, I can transmit it to my five-year-old students that are in front of me. Actually, it does. I have four, I have, how do you know it won't affect them? Actually, there are 74, excuse, excuse me. I'm related to somebody who's in the hospital right now. Are you saying that those five kids don't exist? Miss Lewis? Oh, I'm sorry, am I kind of going, calling my name? I am, sorry. Do you want to continue with your time? Am I over my time limit now? Yeah, it is what it is. I wasn't going to speak anyway. I'm kind of, I'm really horrified at like kind of the, I understand because I taught kids and we had to wear a mask last year. In fact, I wore a mask, I wore goggles, I wore, sorry, two masks, goggles. Well, I also have a diabetic at home and my choice was also to not infect my students, okay? If you, the audience, can you please, people who have public comment have their time? That's all I want to do, is be the best teacher and keep my students safe. So what I'm going to ask, I'm not asking for you to change your mind, I'm just going to ask you, how are we going to reach the middle? Now, how are we going to reach the middle? Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
We have one more public comment. We have one more public comment in person. If I could ask the audience, second time, please, to be quiet so other people have their time as well. Thank you. Can I ask the audience to please allow other people to have time for their public comment? Or they'll have to pause the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, we need to honor everyone's opportunity for public comment and if we can't do that, we are going to adjourn.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Blasiak.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Kim Blasiak. I'm here as a parent of four children in the district. I have a 12th grader, a 10th grader, a 6th grader and a 2nd grader. Two of them have IEPs. I'll be honest, I was in bed and I was watching this on TV and I quick came over because there was a comment made and I'll be honest, I can't remember if it was from the audience or from the letter, so I apologize ahead of time, asking about how children with IEPs and 504s did during COVID. I do respect the opinion that the majority of the audience has, that is their opinion, that is not for me to tell them otherwise, but when it comes to my children and IEPs, that is our business. That's with any of our students, any students, IEPs, no IEPs, what we decide for our children. I have two kids at home that had severe anxiety attacks over the masks last year. I have two kids that didn't. As the year went on, we were lucky enough that based on how we modeled at home, they were fine, to the point where my one son, who we thought would rip it off at school, we told him he'd probably have to wear a mask this year, he's like, as long as I don't have to stand six feet apart, I don't care. I ask this because it's gotten so nasty between all of us and at the end of the day, we're all parents and we're all standing up because we genuinely believe we want to do the right thing for our children. Every single person in that audience, without question, I know you're here, but in seat, because you want to do the best thing for your child. The only thing, I, as a parent in this district, who's going to be here for a while because my 2nd grader just doesn't ever seem to want to grow up faster, let's at least have a common ground where we're respectful of each other's opinions. Like, I, I'll be honest, my personal opinion, I don't care if they want to wear masks, I don't care if they don't want to wear masks. If they tell us, because unfortunately, state, the exact, we all know what's going on with the state right now, they're not going to provide anything, they're trying to cover up some other things. And unfortunately, it left districts across this state just dangling, trying to figure things out, because there is zero guidance from the state. I'm also on New York State PTA and I have direct contact with that office, so I can say that is a fact to the woman shaking her head now. What I ask is that we're all just polite to each other. Like, I may not agree with unmask, but at the same time, I'll fight for your right to believe that and do what you feel is right for your kid. And I would expect you guys to do the same if I decided to send my kids home, because at the end of the day, it's every parent's decision. It's not everyone's choice to tell me what I'm going to do for my child, but it's every parent's decision.
Thank you, Ms. Blasiak. Okay, the next public comment is from Melissa Dover. To whom it may, oh, do you have the timer? Can I ask the audience, ladies and gentlemen? Can I ask the audience, please? Can I ask the audience again? Otherwise, we have to adjourn. Okay. Okay. The next, I think we should adjourn. Okay, we're going to adjourn. Do I need a motion to adjourn? Nate, second, Rebecca, all in favor? Passes 8-0. Thank you.